To order.
Uh.
Read the role. Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith? Mr. Charles? Mr. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Wilder?
Here.
And Mr. Foyce.
Madam City Clerk, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilperson Dave Bozen as the Chair for the work session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Take it away.
Welcome to the City Council, City of Waterloo's Council Work Session. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair? I think this is a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as approval of the minutes of the June 16th, 2025 meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have a work session today, discussion on House Bill 969 and the Fire Department Cancer Prevention initiatives by Fire Chief Bill Beck. Take it away, Bill.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate your time today. I am William Beck, water and fire rescue chief. Today, I'd like to get everyone up to speed on what our fire department's cancer prevention initiatives are. While I do a line, I'll do a line share of this presentation. I have brought Lieutenant John Keeler, as well as leading president Mike Spencer. So specifically, what we're going to talk about today are the changes to the state legislation, which means to, what it means to the city of Waterloo. What we have accomplished so far as a department and a city, and what we still need to do, both in the near future, as well as some long-term possible improvements to the department in the realm of cancer prevention. So before we get started, we'll just have a few definitions here, in particular, what Iowa Code Chapter 411 is, what the MFP-RSI is, and most importantly, how House File 969 means, what it means to both you and to the city firefighters. So we'll start with Iowa Code Chapter 411. Chapter 411 does a lot of things. In this case, specifically, what it does is it deals with the civil service employees. That would include your firefighters and your police in the city of Waterloo. It talks specifically about their retirement and their disability from permanent full-time work. It is managed by the municipal fire and police retirement system of Iowa. Which is, when it never rolls off the tongue easily for me, the NFP-RSI. So the NFP-RSI is most often termed the Pension Board, or the Pension Department, when you talk to a firefighter or a police officer. This department does everything from meeting with the healthy police officers and firefighters to assist them in their retirement planning, to lining up proper pension doctors and paperwork for any type of medical retirement that they may need. The new policy changes deals in part with the covered presumptive cancers. Presumptive means that it's assumed that the job causes the cancer, not our lifestyle. This slide shows what the presumptive cancers were prior to July 1st of this year. There were 14. And let's just pick one. Let's pick lung cancer out for an example, because we all know, and probably have known someone that has lung cancer. I do not smoke. I've never really been a smoker. When I did my, all my physicals 21 years ago to become a member of this department, I did not have lung cancer. That's how I got onto the Pension Board, so that they would, they would accept me. The day after I got hired on, I could have started smoking, a three-pack-a-day habit. If I were to be diagnosed with lung cancer tomorrow, it's presumed that it's from the city of Waterloo's fire department, not my bad choices that caused that. So that's what we're talking about when we talk about a presumptive, that the onus of proof is on the city to prove something different, if that's what they want to believe. Again, if my mom is watching, I don't smoke, so. What the House Bill 969 changes, and this was signed on June 8th by Governor Reynolds, and it went into effect July 1st of 2025. It was voted on and approved 94 to 0 by the State House, and 46 to 1 by the State Senate. The one nay from the Senate was a senator from District 6, a predominantly rural area with no cities that actually are in the NFP-RSI. The new bill that went into effect has two significant changes that can directly affect the city of Waterloo. First, it provides a definition of what cancer is, and that definition is a group of diseases involving abnormal cell growth with a potential to invade or spread to other parts of the body. They then take that definition and say all cancers are now presumptive, with firefighters and police officers in the pension system. It also adds a three-year look back. So I'm 52, I will retire in three years. I will be able to have the look back until I'm 58 years old, if I were to receive some sort of presumptive cancer in those three years. That look back then would go back to the city as the fault of the city's, not my own. If it's over three years, the onus goes on to the employee, or the former employee, of the cancer was being caused by the city, not their choices. But it's still a possibility that after three years, a person could go back onto the city if they could determine that that was the case. For that to be the case, we would have to look at, they would have to almost be able to go back to a certain call, where they didn't have the proper PPE, or a certain number of calls, or a protocol that we had 20 years ago that we have now determined isn't safe, and you need more PPE. Those would be a type of instance where after that three years, you'd be able to get that look back. Now while it's in poor taste to discuss how much cancer costs in the big picture of a firefighter or police officer getting cancer, it can't be glossed, it can't be glossed over, and this is in essence the crux of the liability the city of Waterloo now holds. A quick Google search along with the information sent to me by the MFP-RSI and our own HR reveals the following monetary costs of some of the more common cancers for firefighters. So testicular cancer, which we have 100% higher rate of getting than an average person, is anywhere from $17,000 to $50,000 in medical costs. Multiple myeloma, which we have a 50% higher chance of getting, is a cost anywhere between $75,000 to $250,000. Colorectal cancer is a 30% higher rate, and that's $40,000 to $120,000. I want you to think about the fact as well, that your police department and your fire department, when we're hired on, are some of the healthiest employees the city of Waterloo holds. We're generally younger, we're generally in good shape, because we have to be, and we're healthier. We have a 9% higher risk of getting cancer than any other city employee. And the really scary part is we have a 14% higher mortality rate, once we get that cancer. So not only are we more likely to get the cancer, us, the strong, healthy, at one time, young firefighters and police officers, but we also have a higher likelihood of dying from it. When we talked last August, I believe, when we talked about, I had a work session about station-specific paging, we were just trying to figure out how many of our retired coworkers have died from cancer. Two come to mind right away, and I know since that time, there have been more. It seemed like I had to wear my Class A uniform a whole lot, and a whole lot of times. They didn't all die from cancer, but it definitely is a concern for all of us. So with the House, 969's liability increase to the city. Currently, the city has, for any non-work-related cancer, we have a stop-loss of $100,000. And there are no healthcare subsidies if we have to go off the job because of it, if it's non-health, if it's not work-related. Because that House Bill 969 makes all of them cancers, that means that the stop-loss starts at $750,000. And we have subsidized healthcare until we turn 65. So in talking with our city clerk, and talking with our HR, they both agreed that $400,000 per cancer diagnosis is not unreasonable. That's just the medical costs, that's not my overtime budget, that's not hiring back, that's not employing new employees because someone didn't make it there to 55. That's just the medical cost of $400,000. So after that sobering conversation, I'd like to discuss some things that Waterloo Fire has already done in the name of cancer prevention. We are making a dedicated effort to this cause, and we started in 2018 when we implemented our SOG 811, our Health and Safety Program, as well as Rules and Regulations Departmental Health and Safety Program. Soon after I became chief, and we were, when we, it was soon after I became chief when we gave these programs more teeth, and created the Cancer Prevention Initiative, and named Lieutenant Keeler as the lieutenant in charge of it all. All the following are examples of what we have done, of what we've done, have come either through our members themselves paying the bill, our existing budget, or through the approval of this council. Some of the changes have been paid for by our members. The Shelter brand boonie hat has become an approved item, improved, approved, uniform item for any time our members will have extended time out in the sun. You may see them being worn by our staff at, as we staff the gator for city festivals like my Waterloo days, the mayor's fireworks, or Irish Fest. Anytime a member may be asked to be spent excessive amounts of time in the sun, these hats are allowed. In your council notes, I have included an article on skin cancer and its links to sun exposure from Johns Hopkins University. You know, as far as these hats go, they are fairly expensive. They cost about $50 per member. Multiply that by 115 members, you know, that saves the city $5,700 that the city didn't pay for these, that are going to hopefully prevent skin cancer actions in the future. One of the easiest aspects of our cancer prevention is the most expensive, but it's also one we don't have any choice in. All new fire engines and ambulances must meet emission standards set by both state and federal levels. Again, I have linked in your, in your notes from the PubMed Central regarding lead gas and cancers. Station 6, located at 3233 Ainsborough, recently was outfitted with a diesel mitigation system. This system, which is mandatory in any new construction in the city of Waterloo, is a ventilated system that forces the truck, the fire truck exhaust out of the building through hoses and vents. It was installed at Station 6 for having the last non-clean diesel, it has the oldest truck. And it's also one of the two fire stations that are not drive-in-drive-out. The fire department members have to get out and they have to back their ambulance, or back their fire truck into the station itself, which takes longer, obviously, to do. This money for this system came from unused fuel budget funds in fiscal year '25. It was not a budgeted item, nor did we ask for any additional revenue service sources. I have included the quote for each station. As you can see here, Station 1 would be the most expensive to outfit, because it's got the most doors. Station 5 is rather low, it's at $15,900 because the, of the conversation we've had with our supplier. He's able to use, I don't want to say bent and dent items, but he's able to use some spare parts. Station 5 is the other single-engine fire station that backs in. It's the, it's going to be the cheapest. If we were to buy it now, we'd probably be able to save $5,000 to $8,000 as opposed to those parts off the shelf leave, and we don't have any money. Total would be $196,800. We attempted for an AFG grant last year for diesel mitigation for all the stations, and were denied. We will probably plan on this one possibly in the future, as far as grants go. I do have a link on your, in your notes to this cancer.org article on how clean diesel can still pose cancer threats through both soot, soot, and exhaust, as well as the gases. 20 years ago, if I, as a probationary firefighter, caught a fire 30 minutes into my 24-hour shift, I would be expected to wear that wet, dirty gear for the entirety of my shift. At the end of the shift, I would take my contaminated gear to my private vehicle, go to a commercial laundromat, and wash my gear in a large washer. Once it was done, I would run the machine again, empty, to help clean it out. 15 years ago, then-Captain Treelore wrote a grant and got a department its first extractor, which is located at Station 1. An extractor is a heavy-duty washing machine that is set to specific water temps, spin speeds, and other specifications for fire gear. The one was located at Station 1, it still required all the sub-house personnel to put that dirty contaminated gear in their private vehicle, drive it to Station 1, and then Station 1 personnel had to touch all that dirty contaminated gear to wash it. As, luckily, through some grants, through the state, through the fireworks grant, we were able to have extractors at all six stations now, so fire gear never has to leave the station in any type of private vehicle. As, during my time as lieutenant, I had the extra assignments of issuing fire gear. I began getting members all second sets of hoods and gloves, so they could be switched out after a fire. Chief Treelore and Mayor Hart then later made a dedicated effort to get member, all members their second set of gear. As of today, we are probably around 70% of everyone having two sets. Fire Marshal Welliver has also been the writer of our fireworks grant, and in that past few years, we have received all those extractors for all six stations, like I said. Going back into the, the health and safety aspects of our SOG and rules and regs, we are changing that mentality of dirty gear makes you a hard-working firefighter. A black helmet today is a sign of a lazy firefighter, not a hard-charging one. Attached in your slide notes is a link to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society on the Importance of Clean Fire Gear. Earlier this year, we had all our stations with basements tested for radon. Station 5 on Nevada, and Station 4, also on Ainsborough, had concerning levels. Radon is the second-largest leading cause of lung cancer in the U.S. Funds for this mitigation were through unexpected savings from our health insurance item line item. A link to the EPA's stance on radon is connected in your notes. Saunas were purchased in fiscal year '24 from a dispatch reimbursement. Saunas are an increasingly common site in fire stations across the country. Along with cool and cold pre-sana showers, as well as post-sana showers, it can release the carcinogens absorbed in the skin, as well as give a plethora of other health benefits. I've included a link to the total benefits of saunas for firefighters in your notes. And the biggest item, the one we came here last year for, was our station-specific paging. I'm not going to get into that a whole lot. We are in the process of, Raycom is still putting the final touches on some of the speakers. From what I understand, they have all the speakers in the living quarters of all six stations. They then were going to go around, because they had a rent of scissor lift, to put in all the speakers out on the apparatus floor, obviously, which are tall, and then they have to basically hook in the, the brains of it all. I don't expect it to be a lot longer. It's been longer than I expected. I know when we came to talk about this originally, we were, we were thinking possibly April, that it would be up and running. I was, I had a better paycheck, it was going to be April. But issues with the dispatching system, which are now alleviated, because we can do it with Shieldware, our current company, I think we are on the right track. This technology is 20 years old. We're, we can wait a little bit longer, and we're going to get it. It is coming. So what still needs to be done? We, we have some short, I have some short-term goals I'd like to meet in the three-plus years I have left as chief, but I also have some long-term goals that I'd like to at least establish for the next chief, or the one after even. So some of our short-term goals include continuing the diesel capture installation. Like I said, I showed you those, those prices as we can, we will fill those in. We're working on some carcinogen purifying air systems for the living quarters, because the fireworks grant was able to get us all of our extractors. We are now using that same grant to hopefully get some air purifying systems. And I also want to get a more in-depth schedule for fire gear replacement. I know I talked about how 70% of our firefighters have second sets of gear. Remember that the NFPA is kind of our regulating agency that gives us the guidelines of what we need to follow. Those second sets of gear very often are, are out of date. Per NFPA, fire gear should last 10 years and then be taken out of service. We don't have that. We have second sets of gear that are in safe condition, and not what I believe, and it's better than dirty gear. But it's certainly something that we will continue to work on, and I think getting a replacement schedule for that is going to be a big deal. And we have some long-term goals. There are ideas called clean cab systems, which basically means nothing dirty, not only never gets in the fire station and the living quarters, it never gets in the cab of the truck. Excuse me. So what that would include is basically having personnel show up with, think of a delivery van, with spare sets of gear in it. And at a fire, a person would don off the dirty stuff, it would go to them in the, in the delivery van, and they would get new stuff. That way, the cab itself is always clean. Our cabs are already set up to be cleaned. It's all, if you've ever looked into a fire truck, it's very, all hard plastic, all vinyl or cleanable cloth, so it's an easier-to-clean type of system. It's not like cleaning a cloth seat on a car. And then there are also SCBA cleaning systems, which, if you think about a dishwasher on steroids, basically, you can set up the SCBA, again, that's our pack that we wear, as well as our mask. Currently, the way we wash those after a fire is simply with a soft bristle brush and soap and water. This would actually do more of a decontamination, and a much more thorough cleaning into the fabrics of everything as well. That's all I have for my presentation. Are there any questions that you guys would like to bring up, or concern?
Does any council people have any questions for the chief? Yeah, Mr. Simon?
I'm not able to pull up any of the documents that were sent. Is that my fault, or is that everybody else's?
The notes, the presentation with the notes was sent out separately.
Oh, it was separate, so it's not on the agenda list?
And there should be, PowerPoint should be uploaded to the council packet.
Yeah, I'm not getting that either. I reloaded it a couple times, but I haven't turned off my computer. I just wondered if I was the only one.
Do you have a question, though, for the chief?
My question was, why I cannot see the documents that you wanted me to look at during your presentation?
I can resend them to you.
So no, I do not have any specific questions, other than that.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes, thanks, chief, for the presentation. I was just, as you were going through, I had some questions about, are there any kind of routine? In my mind, I was thinking about lung cancer screening, like guidelines or requirements that you have for, like, routine screening for lung cancer treatment as part of employment?
So for the, the regular firefighters, we go through all the screening when we get hired. It's up to the employee to make sure they do wellness checks on their own. Our hazmat team, the ones that are, that deal with the really nasty stuff, they have bi-annual physicals that test just for about everything.
Okay, that was the one question. And then how often is the, is the radon testing done? Is that something you do regularly?
As far as I know, I was the first chief to issue radon testing. It was, it was, it was high at Station 5, and it was borderline high at Station 4. One thing about all your fire stations is, none of the basements are bedrooms, or they're not supposed to be bedrooms. Typically, basements are workout areas. They can keep supplies down there. So it falls in a weird, a weird dynamic, because when you talk about exposure limits, it's based off an eight-hour, 40-hour weekday, eight-hour day, 40-hour week. We don't work that, so it's, it's hard to find the data that truly says where we're in danger.
And yeah, my, just to clarify on my first question, I brought that up, because at the pharmacy, we're going to be working with the University of Iowa, do some early lung cancer screening for people that we identified who have had a smoking history, but as you were talking-
I've got 115 guinea pigs I'd be willing to offer up to you.
Yeah, I was just wondering how some kind of screening like this would fit into just a routine screening of people who are, as you described, have a much higher risk of contracting.
We're trying to be much more proactive on those types of things. Cancer-wise, I don't necessarily know we are. I know Chief Duncan, his department, and mine have both started to do some mental health evals, just as a, basically, just the checkup. I would say that would fall into something like that, where it's going to be a benefit to the employee to do it. If we can afford it, we absolutely would.
Any other questions?
I have one more question, sir.
Go ahead, then I have some.
The, the data that you put up there earlier, it included the 9% increase. I forget, I would like to pull it up, but I don't have it. You have a 9% higher chance than a regular employee?
And a 14% higher mortality.
14% higher than mortality for the average citizen. What, do you know what the, what range, what years those fell under? I'm just curious how long a range that was?
I'm not sure if-
If it's 20 years of data, or if it's five years of data?
That's a good, that's a great question. I'm not sure if it's-
Because some things have changed in the last five years, excuse me, versus, you know, if it's 25-year pattern, things are better or worse the last five years. I was just curious how that felt.
I would think, it's just such a, it's such a variable, right? So we, as firefighters, are safer, and we have the greatest and best equipment we've ever had. But every house fire we go to, and has more and more carcinogens in it as it burns.
I was just hoping that perhaps it had been better the last five years versus, you know, 25 years ago, when-
Yeah, I don't have any empirical data, nor anecdotal on that.
Very good. Thank you.
As a, as a cancer survivor, and I had a presumptive cancer, and I was four years out. And I can, I can guarantee you, it was related to investigating fires for 16 years.
Because what, not, and I don't mean to put you on blast, what did you wear for protective equipment?
Exactly. You know, I wore filter masks. We didn't have protective equipment. We didn't, we didn't issue it, you know. And that, I was exposed to tons of carcinogens for 16 years. But getting neither here nor there. What are we doing right now to meet minimum air quality standards in the station?
Opening the window in nice days?
Because, keep in mind, when we built those stations, and we built all but Station 5, we had exhaust units built into the apparatus base.
I know Station 2 does.
Well, they, no, they were in all of our stations.
Okay.
And, and they were to change the air when, when, when we had the, when the trucks fired up. But because of the, the powers that be at that time thought our utility bills were so high.
Right.
They were disconnected and deactivated. So we, we had a way to deal with that years ago, and, and they chose not to, which is really disappointing. You know, and that was, it was just based on monetary. It wasn't, it wasn't based on, on that.
I can certainly look into the operability of, of the, the ones at, at the stations.
I almost bet they don't operate anymore.
I would imagine not.
Anymore. But, you know, the, the building codes, the IFC, OSHA, NFPA, International Maintenance Code, International Building Code, you know, all require on, on new construction and that, that, it'll fall in there somewhere for the diesel mitigation systems. Now, we've got it at Station 6, but how many of those adapters do we have on the other, on the additional rigs, so that when, when vehicles come into Station 6 to fill in for, when that truck's down for maintenance or service, or that ambulance is down for maintenance service, that system's out of service, if we don't have those adapters on those other rigs?
We have the, I know we have the adapter for the, an ambulance.
One ambulance.
One ambulance. That could be the reserve. It's sitting on my desk right now. We haven't been able to get it installed. And I don't believe we have it for the, the next engine. Our hopes are that when we get our new Engine 6 this fall, we will keep all of that onto, all those parts onto the current Engine 6, which will become the reserve, and it'll be set that way that we won't have that diesel, we'll be able to hook up to the diesel mitigation with at least one reserve ambulance and one reserve engine.
And I, we've had a conversation on diesel mitigation prior, prior to this, way back when. And, and when I brought up funding, and you said you don't, you didn't have the funding for it, you know, but yet, we did have $300,000 in, in, in assigned paramedics' pay savings, and we had, what your estimate was, additional $300,000 in increased ambulance revenue. Personally, I would have liked to have seen to do half the stations in this fiscal year, and come up with the funding to do half the stations in the next fiscal year, you know, and, and I know, you know, finance says, well, well, we can't, you know, we can't use that money for other things, but yet, we use $50,000 of that money to buy that pickup truck for the day-shift medical officer, so that, I, I think there was a way that we could do it, and I think we really need to look at prioritizing a diesel mitigation system for all of our stations. $200,000, that, that's, that's one-fifth of a cancer, or, or one-third of a cancer payout, you know. And, and so I, I think if we're going to prioritize something, I truly believe we need to prioritize diesel mitigation at, at all the stations. A diesel mitigation system should not be opening the doors in the front and the back, and hoping, try to get air through there at different times of the year. And I, and I know the guys on the drive-through stations do that, to air it out, so. I, you know, and you look at other departments, Cedar Rapids, you know, Cedar Falls, Des Moines, West Des Moines, Evansdale, for gosh sakes, they have diesel mitigation systems. I, I really believe that, that we need, as a city, to, to come up with a funding source somewhere, somehow, I wish Bridgette was here, to, to figure out a funding source to get it, get, you don't need $200,000 now, because you've already got Station 6 done, or is that including Station 6, not including?
No, that was just the other stations. $198,000 was for the, the rest of the stations.
We, that's, that's-
We, that's a doable amount of money.
That is extremely doable amount of money.
The, the issue I have with using revenue funds is, obviously, the biggest revenue builder for the, the fire department is the ambulance. With, with that, it seems like around March, we, we always stay really close to our projected, and then around March, if we're going to grow and be beyond, that's when we're going to do it. Well, by the time March comes around, we start to get those numbers, that I can go and talk to finance, it's almost too late. Like, we can't get it done that quickly.
And, and I understand that. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I, I do know that, that we knew the numbers for assigned paramedics. Because that, that was a constant, because we didn't have enough, we didn't have the manpower with the years on the job to be assigned paramedics. So we had that savings, and that, that wouldn't be in, in, in revenue generation as far as-
Right, that would have been, that would have been revenue, or that would have been budget savings.
Exactly. And that's where I really wished we would have at least done half of the stations this fiscal year. this fiscal year, the, the last one that we just finished. And then we would, then we'd have to just come up with $100,000
Right.
in the next fiscal year, so.
I think I can, I think I can swing $100,000 after six months if, if it looks like we're going to do well in our revenue lines.
Yeah, but, okay. I'm sorry.
One minute.
Oh, well, I, I'm done. I'm done. I really appreciate your time, and I want to, I want to thank everyone that worked on this. They put a lot of time and effort into it, and, and I, it seems like I was going to a funeral a week for a while.
Yeah.
And they were, and they were cancer-related. You know, these, these guys retire, and you think that they're, they've got quality of life, and they're supposed to, this is supposed to be the, the time that they can really enjoy it. You retire at 55 or 57. And then the next thing you know, you know, like, like our, one of our more recent ones, you know, he came out down with acute lymphoma and then, you know, died within months.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a broken record. These guys will, will agree to it that you need to figure out a way to retire at 55, because.
But look what we've done. I mean, we used to take our dirty soiled bunker gear, our bunker pants and boots, and carry them up to our bedrooms and set them next to our beds.
Right.
So that when the alarm went off, we could jump out and just jump into our boots and pull, pull our, our pants up. And my God, how many years did we do that, that we slept next to the carcinogens that are causing cancer today?
We're, we're definitely going the right direction, but there's definitely a lot more to go.
All right. Well, that's it. Thank you so very much. Thanks for the work session. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks, chief.